Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regularly scheduled meeting of Simsbury Planning Commission to Order. Today is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. Would you all please rise and join me reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say a special thank you to Simsbury Community TV for recording the proceedings. Next order on our agenda is the roll call. Please indicate your presence by saying aye. Holly Bem. Holly emailed, said she was not feeling well today, so she's absent. David Blumey.
Aye.
Erin Levitt Smith.
Aye.
Ellen Needham.
Here.
William Rice.
Aye.
Elizabeth Byrd.
Present.
Rich Cortez. Absent. Gary Lundarini. Absent. One, two, three, four. We have four regular members in attendance tonight, so Elizabeth, I'll ask you to be promoted to a seat on the full board tonight. And I think before we get too much further on the agenda, just like to note a change to the agenda. If anyone is here related to the AD Climax Road application, we had a late notification from the applicant in which they asked to postpone the opening of the public hearing, which was scheduled for tonight, and they've asked that it be opened at our next meeting, which is May 14th. So, I don't want anyone to sit through the agenda and... Okay. We appreciate you. We'll see you next time. Okay, so back to the minutes, or back to the agenda. Mr. Secretary, could you take us through the minutes from our last meeting?
Okay, minutes for the meeting held March 26th, rather. Anybody see anything on page one? Nothing?
Yes, I was...
Nope, you're all right? Okay. Page two, I've got something towards the bottom.
Yep.
The other one, the same thing.
Yeah, but line 64. Michael, there's three specific reasons for this.
The 10 reasons we had in our denial of the application for AD Climax was remanded back to, the appeal was successful, certain points were remanded back to this commission, and it's three?
Three.
Okay.
Yeah, just three, yeah.
Thank you. And then, the only thing I saw was on the...
What was that?
It should be $2,500.
Yeah.
Not $2,500.
Line 81 changed to $2,500 instead of $25.
You better prove back.
Also on line 82, yeah, it's true that that property is bounded by West Mountain Road, but our application was specified as 14 of Roswell Road. So, it's probably an accurate representation of what was said. It's up to the commission whether we want to change it or not.
We collected the fee on the West Mountain address, though.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Because that was the law.
That was, yeah.
Excellent. No further questions from me.
Okay, that covers both pages. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 26th? So moved.
Second?
Just, please have the motion show that it's...
With modifications.
With modifications, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. All right, let's see what we have next. Okay, the next item on the agenda was the public hearing that we were going to open for the AD Climax Road application, but as I explained, we're not going to do that. Do we need to have a motion to amend the agenda?
No.
Okay. And same thing under old business, that same application for AD Climax Road. So, under new business, any new applications, Mr. Glidden?
There's no new applications, Harvey. We have two referrals.
Two referrals, yeah.
One from the zoning commission, the other from the Board of Select.
Yep, okay. So, the first referral is CGS 8-38, referral to the zoning commission for zoning commission application number 19-21 of TJ Donahue Jr., Esquire agent, McLean Affiliates Incorporated petitioner, for a text amendment to Article 10, Section K, Table 10, bulk area and site requirements of the Simsbury zoning regulations regarding maximum height. And, okay, so there will be a public hearing led by the zoning commission, scheduled for 6:03. So, I see Attorney Donahue is here. Would you mind explaining the application to us?
Very pleased to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. For the record, TJ Donahue, Killian Donahue, I represent McLean Affiliates, and I think you all know that McLean Affiliates operates in McLean Home on Searle Lane, Great Pond Road. May I approach and give you some pictures?
Okay.
I'll give you three pictures. In the lower, in the left-hand half, the white roof is the existing convalescent care facility, and the other sea of roofs is the Burkeholder Apartments. And if you look at the last sheet, you can see the orientation of this facility, it is the gray roof that's penciled in, that you see, and you can see that that reaches directly from the Burkeholder Apartments, and is, in fact, to be attached to them, and then it runs due north toward the Villas, which are part of McLean on the top edge of that. They're not very pronounced, but let me just... The Villas are here. McLean built those 10 years ago. There's a bunch of, a cluster of small cottages that were built originally, which I think several of those will give way to this project and be demolished to accommodate this project.
Would you show us where, you said penciled in. I don't...
Not penciled, these are the...
No, before that, you said something was to be changed that is penciled in.
This is the penciled in, this is the...
Oh, just ten, okay.
...the new structure. So, if you go back to sheet one, you can see the Burkeholder facilities and the existing convalescent care facility and the area trees above the Burkeholder Facility, and if you go back and look at the second sheet, it does show a graphic of what is intended to be built. You know, this is a text amendment that we start with because it's a modification of the zoning regulation, and it's necessary because, it's desired for this, because we have a very large tract, we have existing business with a campus established and built, and we have a need for additional housing, senior housing, to round out and fulfill the elements of a community. It's a very competitive business now, this is a wonderful business, it's been there, it's a 501(c)(3), but they have, 10 years ago, they grew with the Villas, and now they've made a decision that they need to grow with the facility. They will have 50 apartment units for seniors, they will also have a ground floor of very extensive amenities, which are equal to those being built in all the other communities like this around now. There are so many growing, and it's a competitive business. To keep, to hold it rounded, to keep existing as the facility that they are, they feel they need to grow, and they're proposing this structure. The structure wants to be higher for seniors because linear distances are the enemy for many of those seniors. You know, as you get older, you get less agile into walking, or ambulating, or being rolled around is hard. Therefore, this structure is designed by the consultants that McLean works with, and this is what they're doing. But if they want to be four stories, they want to have three stories of living on top of each other, where you use elevators, keep everything closer together. Also, the ground floor being the amenity floor will be a corridor which integrates the existing facility and actually ties in with the Burkeholder Facility and the Burkeholder Apartments, and it will be a state-of-the-art amenity facilities for people here. I don't want to answer any questions that you have. The specific change is on page two of the application. And it's, if you look at the matrix block, you see star as maximum height, and this is the assisted living part of your zoning regulations, and it applies to any facility that's an assisted living facility throughout the town. And so, it says that the maximum height will be determined as of, as required by the underlying zone. So, for example, the Hartford Code site could be 65 feet. It could be different heights in different places, and under a PUD site, it could be 50 feet if you had a PUD. There's no reason to turn this from a PUD, it's an existing site with all of the history and all of the compliances that it has. So, we talked with your staff, we round tabled, we got some good ideas, and they cleared us to bring to you this proposal, that the maximum height will no longer say as required by the underlying zone, it would say, the bottom of the paragraph, as required by the underlying zone, except that in any zone when the lot is in excess of 40 acres, and the location of the post-structure, structured location is greater than 500 feet from any abutting residential use structure that is located outside the facility property, the maximum height shall not exceed 65 feet. That would mean that you have to have a large site, you have to be a long way from residences, and therefore, the site plan will be governed by the zoning commission to make sure that it fits the size, scope, scale, and massing, but that it does give them the ability to get vertical in this circumstance to better serve their constituents.
TJ, is that, can you tell me in stories, like we're going from three to four?
The proposal that they have is they're going to go below grade for parking, because parking likewise is something that seniors want to be, so there's going to be underground parking, and then there's going to be four stories, there's going to be one story. The proposal at this point is, the plan that we seek, we don't have a site plan yet. The concept that we want is to have the amenity floor, first floor, and then three floors of apartments for, for the garage.
So, when you say 65, that's to the roof line, the top of the roof?
The top, yes.
You know, the way of the zoning regulations is the midpoint between the peak and the eaves, so the peak of the roof may actually be at 70 or 75, but your building height's determined at the middle point. TJ, with your permission, sorry if I show them that way, maybe this can... So, this is the package that was presented to the zoning commission on a preliminary. This may help you on looking at what this building would propose, if you go to the last page.
So, that roof line actually adds another story.
Six and a half feet, maybe. Why do you not define inside what it was first? Four stories plus half feet.
Right, and if you look at the peak, it's the same height as the...
But under the zoning regs, we're measuring to that middle point, we don't care about where the peak lies. It's really, what's that middle point between the peak and the eaves is where you're going to determine your building height. And that drawing there gives a good representation of what they were proposing, and that's, just on that basis, was 63 feet. So, they're staying within 65. And the reason why the 65 feet was chosen was in the industrial districts, the regulations allow for a exception to the rules to go above 40 feet and go up to 65 feet. So, it is allowed in other zoning districts. The other thing, just to clarify, this particular use, one, you know, the building height obviously is to be an exception, but in order to land an assisted living facility under the zoning regulations, it has to be a property that's in excess of five acres and is served by water and sewer. You cannot have a well or septic system in order to build one of these. So, there, it really limits where in town these things can land.
So, give me some, right down the corner, Powder Forest Drive. Give me some, for instances.
Yeah, Powder Forest and Hot Meadow.
So... TJ, is all right if I put up the GIS behind you? Sure.
So, we always say this, the red and a black line, and I'm sorry, this is grainy. Yellow lines are parcels, the red and black lines, that's actually the sewer lines that are serving. So, for example, there's a site which is served by sewer out on Great Pond Road. That particular parcel obviously exceeds the 40 acres. Similar sized site, let's just say was not subject to conservation leases, Elden Forest here would qualify.
But Elden Forest is no force.
I'm just saying was not subject to, because you can't...
Oh, gotcha.
These events can go away one day. Powder Forest, what the chairman mentioned earlier, there is a development parcel right here, which actually is supposed to be an assisted living facility, that could land there.
Where is that exactly at this time?
Here's Mitchell dealership right here, Hot Meadow Street.
Well, we dumped all the Christmas trees.
Exactly. That was your storm cleanup site, where Public Works was receiving that. The Hartford campus, this could land, but there's actually a regulation, and TJ was correct, that that has a, that zoning district has a different building height on the underlying zone. For example, the CA Ventures Building, that's the largest building that's under construction, just north of where my arrow is here, it's an assisted living right here. That, the maximum building height's 50 feet in that zoning district.
5-0?
5-0.
So, those new apartments that are going up, those are only 50 feet tall?
They're different building, they're different heights, all of those different buildings there. The apartments, I'm talking about the assisted living facility, which are very...
But the apartments, how tall are those? Just so we can visualize, 60 feet?
They're less than 65, yeah. I think the tallest building is maybe, yeah, 55, I think.
So, this is really tall?
So, another site this could land would be the, the alone Hot Meadow here, this is the old CLMP, we have Garden Homes Apartments over here that could land over here, from the mouse's.
So, you're pointing out where there are areas that are greater than five acres, served by water and sewer, and possibility of a...
Possibility that could land.
This kind of facility going there, and they would, they'd be covered by that, by this...
They would have that ability to exceed what's allowed of the underlying zoning district.
Actually, there's... With a very significant, with a very significant governor on it, they gotta be...
500.
Can't be within 500 feet. Yeah, I mean, that's... They can't be within 500 feet of another structure, of residential structure.
So, including apartments.
Yes. Yeah, I'm just showing you land areas, not even measuring yet to, like, separation distances from...
So, if there weren't for the extra restrictive language, you might see it on those places, but TJ's going to tell us the restrictive language keeps it...
It limits where they can be on there, and it was the town staff's concept that that would be a good governor for any massing that would bother anybody.
So, I heard you say that the parking is underground, so the high structure is not including a parking garage?
No, the parking is all on the underground, and the 63 feet that we show you is the worst-case scenario for the structure in the event the town staff measured the ground floor elevation at the garage floor. And it's highly likely on the structure because of the rolling hill, that the parking will be more like, you see at One West Street, where it's under. It's truly under, and you don't measure the roof line. I don't think we measure the roof line at One West Street from the garage floor, I think we measure it from the first floor, from the front door elevation where you're going. So, I think that there's a good chance that this will be 53 feet high, but we worked on it and thought it through and thought this was appropriate, particularly with that protection.
Michael, what is the maximum height now as required by the underlying zone?
30, 35 feet.
35.
And that's because it's a residential zone and it carries that over.
Right.
That's R40 there?
That's, I was about to show you. So, it's R40, which is the underlying zoning district.
How many units are they foreseeing for this project? 50?
Are these units that will be sold to individuals, or are these monthly rental type, monthly payment type?
I want to give you the most information. There's absolutely, there's absolutely no thought that they would be sold, they'll become part of the continuum of care community, and these are the types of units that people want. They go there, they get an apartment there, and then they have assurance that they or their surviving spouse can have continuity in the community.
It makes a difference to me, at least, if they're individually sold.
So, if you have a four-story building with somebody on the top floor, and you have a fire, and the elevator goes out, you've got somebody potentially infirm needing to evacuate the building by stairway?
That's, sure, that's theoretically possible, but there's no more secure place...
It would not be the case on the ground floor.
There's no more secure place in Simsbury. The McLean Home is the largest employer in Simsbury. It's an award-winning facility.
It's true here.
Yeah. I mean, I would think they would have to have certain regulations about...
Fire marshal.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, we'd have to...
Extraordinary regulations, but as I say, it's an award-winning facility, and it's the most secure place in Simsbury, and if there's an emergency, it serves as a center for emergencies, if there are other emergencies, but it's ready for any emergency, and it deals with the types of issues you have with mobility and infirmity all the time, every day.
Could you explain the thought process or rationale for submitting or applying for a text amendment versus a variance?
It was, we start with town staff in the planning department, and it's a, it's a huge bias on their part, that they would like a premier facility like this in town to be legitimate under zoning and not be, not be part of a variance application. And that's the way they look at it, and, you know, I don't take any exception to that, I understand that.
So, you have the real purpose of your coming before our commission is for us to make a referral as to the adherence of this application, or at least the text amendment application, relative to the plan of conservation and development?
Yes, if I may. I believe that your considerations today will be driven by that, and I did some notes that I think have been passed out, but I see four ways that this proposal is informed by the plan of conservation and development. 10.2 says it seeks ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents, seek to provide for housing choices for seniors who wish to live in Simsbury, including those with limited means, and to me, this is a proposal which provides key housing to individuals who need it now, and will need it, more and more of us will need it as we go on.
Are there, sorry, to interrupt you, are there any affordable units proposed?
Not as part of the original apartment, but there are, there are affordable aspects of McLean Home, and McLean Home has a community service outline and, a summary of it that's available to the town that shows that they provide innumerable services gratis and broadly into the community. The proposal, specifically the increase in verticality, is key to all congregant housing for seniors. Simply, the use of design height and elevators to compress the footprint of residences and amenities has huge benefits for seniors and residence operators. Aging includes loss of agility and mobility and reduction in auto use. The facility by design will substantially reduce pedestrian distances and the use of automobiles. It directly addresses the plan of conservation directive to provide for housing choices for seniors who wish to live in Simsbury. The second one is we want to, what we want to protect is open space. You know, McLean Affiliates refers to the McLean Home, but it also refers to the McLean Game Refuge, which has 4,000 acres, and avoids 1,000 on Simsbury. And they work together, and they walk together, and they're operating with the same governance. And for that to be, for McLean to be strong, both parts have to work, and so, the recognition by Simsbury that open space and preserved, conserved lands is essential to our character, cites specifically that the McLean Game Refuge is a key element to that. McLean exists due to and under the governance of the will of George P. McLean. His estate has two primary components, the Game Refuge and McLean Continuing Life and Care Community. The McLean preserves open space primarily by stewarding 4,000 acres of McLean Game Refuge, which is in the town of Simsbury in Grandview. In harmony with their McLean Continuing Life and Care Community, they ground these 200 acres of scenic corridor and habitat land use for Hot Meadow Country Club. Hot Meadow Country Club is also a key element in a scenic aspect, which is specifically mentioned in your plan of conservation and development, is something that's highly desired. The facility by design will take advantage of the natural setting, complement the partner, and partner with Hot Meadow, strengthening its base, increasing its use, and assuring its upkeep and maintenance, which will benefit the members of McLean and also the broader community, the broader community. And both McLean and Hot Meadow Country Club are mentioned in the special areas of what we want to protect, maintain, and enhance. The POCD identifies and directs that McLean Game Refuge and Hot Meadow Country Club are special areas which the town should seek to protect and maintain. McLean physically occupies the northwest corner of Simsbury in a single parcel with trails, woods, streams, and ponds, it makes a huge contribution to the quality of life in Simsbury, both as an active and passive resource, which could never be reclaimed or duplicated. They say that when you draw an X in the corners of Simsbury, the lines intersect at Hot Meadow Country Club. From that standpoint, it is an ideal central visitor recharge area and stream and wildlife corridor. With those functions, and the planning commission designating it as a character place to be protected, it is in full compliance with the plan of conservation and development. A healthy and sustained, McLean supports and sustains and promotes Hot Meadow. Additionally, you should know that, in addition to McLean being McLean, the continued care facility, and being a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, it is a business, it's the largest employer in Simsbury. It, it provides tremendous services, both on campus and off campus, and it's clearly in the best interest of Simsbury for it to flourish and to be supported, to be allowed to grow and enabled to grow. Four quick points. We think that this change is appropriate for large tracts, particularly with campus-type facilities. Think of this type of a concept of allowing verticality, think of Westminster School, which has 60 footers and the like, and this is very similar, if not unlike it. The verticality is very desirous for seniors, and can make a big difference in the functionality of the facility. of the facility. So, and it's a great, good business. So we respectfully request, the McLean respectfully requests that we get a favorable reference and define that this is and complies with your plan of conservation and development.
Well, that's all true about McLean and how the text amendment affects this site. The text amendment also affects other sites. So you can also look in the plan of conservation and development and see references about sense of place, protecting neighborhoods. So the question I have is, would this text amendment then allow something like this in a place that does give us some problems with the P O C D in terms of neighborhoods, sense of place? There's a lot of references like that. So as always with text amendments, the dangerous part is not where you want it, it's where else it might end up. That's my concern. So I understand what you're saying about the 500 feet.
500 feet's a lot.
It's a lot, okay? And so on your site, I'm... This isn't your problem, I suppose, but I'm worried about the next guy that comes in and said, "Well, you let them do it, you know, and we want to do it on this site. We want it 65 feet tall. We've already set our precedent." That's what I worry about, is the precedent. Now, will that happen? I don't know. All I know is that the text amendment would make it more likely to happen. That's my concern, to be honest with you. That's my concern. It's where else are we going to get something like this?
Yeah, my unofficial scientific polling has revealed that a lot of people that I speak to in town are not really happy with what's happening across from the tennis center and south end of town.
Because it's...
Because of the scale.
Scale, yeah.
I understand that this would be contained. I'm not sure... I'll tell you, I'm not real happy with what happened at Westminster either. You drive north on Route 10 now in the winter and only sees the... It's a beautiful building, okay, but it's a... It's a mile left. I'm not quite sure it fits. So I have a little bit of reservations.
Yes, we're saying similar things.
Yep.
Chairman, right?
Mr. Blum.
Have you had any opportunity to get reaction from Hot Meadow Golf Club? And I realize there's a symbiotic relationship with McLean and Hot Meadow, but it's my understanding that they struggle to maintain and grow membership. And I don't know, have you had a chance to... Has there been any reaction from Hot Meadow on this?
Hot Meadow and McLean are through a period now where they've worked extremely closely together and create harmony to help the advance of the facilities in Hot Meadow, which are open in the spring, which are pretty dramatic and pretty nice. I don't think... I don't think this building will be able to be seen from anywhere except Hot Meadow.
Yeah, that's...
I don't... We're doing a little bit of evaluation of that because the staff asked us to do that, so they're going to have a balloon test. We're pretty confident that you're not going to be able to see it from anywhere except on the golf course. And the leaders of the golf course have been 100% supportive.
What about the group of houses over here? I don't recall the street.
Is that Washburn Drive?
There's a whole bunch of... Well, there's a big bunch of houses when you pass the entrance to McLean's.
Right. To... Yes, that's Teachers Turn.
All of these houses here. So they'll have a pretty clear view of a four-and-a-half-story building. They'll see it.
I don't think so.
Or you don't?
No, it's over the crest of it. They're down, and it's over the crest of a hill, and there's a significant tree buffer there, a very significant tree buffer. They can't see this building at all.
Which is...
The existing building.
How tall is the existing building?
About 25 or 30.
Oh, we're talking twice... We're talking twice as tall as the existing building, right?
I don't think they'll be able to see it from... And I'm not in the habit of giving opinions if I don't have some basis for it. I've just walked all over it. I found all over the conjunction with getting this application together.
Mr. Glidden, any town staff comments?
Well, you know, we actually working with TJ on this application, and he is correct. We met with him, and the other option was a variance. However, what we discussed was the issue of demonstrating hardship to the zoning board of appeals, which they said they didn't want to do. Because the question ZDA would ask is, well, you can just build a two-and-a-half-story building within regs, sprawl it out, versus what they're trying to do within what the industry modeled. One thing that the group had before the zoning commission, was it two weeks ago, you were before zoning? They brought their consultant, who was their senior housing consultant, and he was talking about the industry and how this is kind of... This is what the industry is going towards, a taller, you know, narrower building. From the perspective of impacts to the neighborhood, the existing regulations, one other thing that comes into play is in Article 10K subsection 5, the zoning commission has the authority to look at design of the building, building materials, colors, roof lines, et cetera, and how they'll impact the surrounding neighborhood. So it's already something that the zoning commission is looking at when they review these such facilities under the current regs, which wouldn't change with this text amendment. I think that, you know, they've made an effort to avoid by really saying, you know, the size, the parcel that's sort of applied to, the distance from placement of buildings as it relates to other residentially-used structures outside of the facility is really... It really narrows down where this thing can land. You're probably looking at McLean's and maybe outer forest drive as probably the two locations this could really land in Simmsbury. And mainly because of the fact that the site has to be served by both public water and public sewer. If that was not in our regs and it could land anywhere, I would say, yeah, this could go anywhere in town. But because you're limited with public utilities, it really... It becomes very narrow. If the commission's concerned... I mean, this is scheduled for a public hearing on June 3rd, so the zoning commission does not need a response from you for their next meeting. They're planning on doing a balloon flight on Thursday of this week. We could have pictures to show you, you know, whether you're going to see the balloon. The balloon's going to go up the height of the building. That was a discussion at the zoning commission. It's a test that usually you see when you have cell towers that are proposed to the siting council. They'll fly a balloon at the total height of the tower and then drive around basically the perimeter of the development to say, can you see it? And if so, you know... So what will happen is that they'll fly a balloon up Thursday morning, and staff, Janelle and Robin will be meeting you, will be driving around to the sea off of Grape Pond Road, Washburn, and then Teachers Turn, et cetera, in that vicinity to see, can you see this balloon? Very likely due to the placement of the structure within the site as it relates to public rights away and abutting parcels, we may not be able to see this balloon. But I agree with you. Without doing that test, I don't want to, you know, tell you 100% that you will not see this thing from any of the... But staff's opinion is very likely you will not see this. Unlike other parcels, what you kind of related earlier, Westminster, the Hartford campus, where they're right in front of you.
The utilities requirement you referenced?
Mm-hmm.
That's not part of the text amendment?
No, that's in the existing regulations.
That's in the existing regulations for something this size.
The way the zoning is worded now, that gets required by underlying, it's really taking into consideration the character of that particular community. Is that correct? Am I correct to say that?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So by changing that to anywhere, as long as they have the right acreage, 65 feet, you really do away with the concept of maintaining community character.
I think that's why, you know, the text amendment as proposed requires 40 acres, right? 500 feet between any other structure, so they're trying to isolate the impact.
That's kind of what I was trying to get at.
Exactly.
Is that the P O C D may not have a problem with this, but it could if it's used somewhere else.
Exactly.
But... There's that restrictive language in there. I mean, they've only described their site, is what they do.
Yeah, well, typically, text amendments are done that way to try to narrow it down.
But like, Alan's question, the other thing you asked about, that's in Section 10.
What's in Section 10?
This whole section is taken right out of Section 10, which applies only to assisted living facilities. It's kind of like the P U D section that applies to P U Ds.
Right, so it's limited to assisted living facilities. Well, you know, I think that we have a little breathing room here. I do have a concern over the height of the structures, the proposed heights. I think it'd be helpful to see what the balloon test returns. How big's this balloon?
My balloon, I think they're like that. They're alien balloons, dude. Fly them on... They got to be big enough to carry the string up.
And you can see them from across the street?
What they do is they get his place, they measure the spot where they put it, and then they have 65 feet, and the balloon flies at 65 feet above the ground. And we're going to put them in three different areas along the site, along the spine of where the building will be.
Unless it's windy.
If it's windy, you got to be home for Friday.
And if people on the perimeter...
Wind takes out.
And they're big enough for people on the perimeter to see them?
Oh, we'll be able to see them.
What time?
Eight or nine o'clock on Thursday.
Okay, so I propose that we table this. When is the balloon test?
Thursday.
It's Thursday?
Thursday. It is not raining or doing...
Okay. So our next meeting is May 14th. So we expect to have some type of results of the balloon test. Photographs, someone attesting to what they can see, something like that. You okay?
Mr. will be with us. I was going to say, Robin Newton and Janelle Mullin will be attending the flight.
I have mentioned that.
Would they ever consider going a little while?
What?
The proposal?
I think that there's some room there. The number was a consistent number when we workshopped with staff. You know, five feet made a difference, they'd go down five feet for sure. But conceptually, I think it's pretty strong, and I do think that if you got a signature facility like that that was given to the town, that's the 200 acres, plus the acre of the... I think that... I'm very comfortable asking you for favorable consideration. I'm very comfortable giving you time to look at the results of our test.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Explain quite a bit.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll expect that on our agenda next time. Thanks very much.
I have to go to a zoning meeting. South Windsor right now is likely to be not as friendly, so I...
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have a referral from the Board of Selectmen regarding a proposed Eagle Scout project called Sun Shelter at Gifts of Love Farm, which is at the community farm on property located at 69 Walcott Road. Assessors map I-0, block 439, lot 002. It is currently zoned as an I-1. So I think we have Patrick Aldrich. Please, can you explain your project to us?
So my name is Patrick Aldrich. I'm a life scout for Troop 75 in Simmsbury. And the project will be an 11-by-15-foot structure, about eight feet tall, and will provide a shaded area where campers can still learn outside and stay cool. I have chosen this project because I wanted to be able to help the younger members of our community who attend camp there in the summer, learn about the farm and an outdoor environment. This way, they can get a better experience learning about plants and their environment outside instead of inside the classroom and stay cool.
So there's a couple of questions, if I may. A few years ago, a similar application was presented to this board, and I think it was a shelter for animals. Are you familiar with the town farm property at all?
From the past, Mikey Doyle was the lead project.
So this, if I understood you, would be for people?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you... Did you have a sketch or a drawing of what this is going to look like?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Is it like those picnic...
The roof held up? Yes, it's basically just like four posts and they'll have like a standard roof on top.
And a wall on one side? Is that a wall?
So it's open?
It's open air.
Open air?
Yeah.
Okay.
Four posts and a slope.
Yep. Do you... Are you... When do you have to have the project done by? When do you turn 18?
I turn 18 in August.
So you've got to...
You've got to get going.
Got to get going, huh? Okay.
You shouldn't hold them up.
No.
Well, I make a motion that we refer a positive referral back to the Board of Selectmen for Mr. Aldrich's proposed Eagle Scout project, Sun Shelter at Gifts of Love, located at the community farm.
A second?
Any discussion?
He's a good kid. Good for you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
How are you going to raise the funds? Lots of cookies.
I'm thinking about doing a car wash over St. Mary's.
You know, I...
And donations.
Yeah. My son's an Eagle Scout from Troop 76, and the town is very generous to Eagle Scouts, so they're good about giving donations or reducing prices, so definitely use the universe. They're very... The town is very good and supports the Horse Scouts and Eagle Scouts, I'd say, so good luck.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Okay, on to the next agenda item, general tuition business. Any...
I want to... Yeah, I'll email Patrick. Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Any correspondence, Mr. Glidden?
No. I just have one item to report to you, just as a community FYI. The Tobacco Valley Solar Project will start construction May 1st.
Wow.
And looking for completion October 15th of this calendar year.
We have...
So...
Where is that?
The off County of Hoskins Road.
That big place is...
135 acres.
We have an agricultural expert in the family of North Carolina, sells agricultural equipment. He knows his stuff. And he was saying, I'm not saying this is true, he was saying that for some period, like five or six years, you can't get crops to grow where those things were, that it does something to the microbes in the soil and all. On the other hand, just saw a guy on PBS who's proposing growing crops under the solar panels while they're up.
The siting council actually required they had to do a farm soil preservation plan. And so, yeah, this... So what happened was they submitted for developing the address plan with the siting council, which is akin to like a site plan development, so there's more details. So some of the concerns with potential impact to prime farmland soils were considered in developing the site plan. So, but with that May 1st construction date, you'll see some impacts in town, because you have about 200 workers that will be on site for this project.
Are they local, any local workers?
Well, define local. New England?
America.
American, yes. I can say yes to that. So, that's, that's just as a, as a announcement, at least, because you will hear, people will approach you on this one, once it starts. May 1st, construction starts.
Those workers will need housing, some.
Yeah, but it's temporary for six to eight months in the raw. And the other thing is, I've been under discussions with the, with the property owner off of West Mountain Road again. Looks like you may be seeing an application this spring for, it's a...
Board lot re-subdivision off West Mountain Road.
So, we'll stay tuned. I know, I reported a while ago to the board, well, he, the builder who's going to file the application with him, walked from the project, a different builder has taken up the torch, so we may have some business beyond other items.
Is that, that sort of affordable housing?
No, this is a conventional subdivision. No affordability.
Is it on the opposite end of West Mount from where the Roswell?
It's closer to 44th.
Oh, this is the one that backs up to near Hoffman?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's where we were afraid that people's value would be affected by that zone change on top of the ridge. Well, apparently it made it worth more to somebody.
That's it, that's all I've got for...
Commission, is any comments, questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Mr. Blum, he made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we'll give it to Elizabeth. All in favor of adjournings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.